Joyce, you call, roll for us please.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Mayor Durham?
Present.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Sevier?
Present.
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
All present, we have a quorum.
All right, with the quorum present, I'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled meeting for July 20, 2016. We'll start this meeting with a word of prayer and a pledge allegiance. I'm gonna ask that Councilmember Moore lead us in the word of prayer and that Councilmember Sevier lead us in the word of prayer afterwards.
Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for your blessings. And Father, we pray today that all that's conducted in this room would glorify and honor you and be for the betterment of this community. Father, I thank you for those who serve and I pray that, Father, for wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Thank you for this city. Would you help us to grow and prosper and to glorify you in all that we do? In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, in front of you should have a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. If there's no additions, changes, or additions to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second, I've got a motion to approve, and second, any discussion on the minutes. Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of approving the minutes, there'll be no more than a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. Well, I'm glad to see everybody here today. You brought a smile on my face already. You guys have done a really good job in baseball this year, I understand. So, we've got a group of seven-year-olds and a group of ten-year-olds here. And I'm gonna let Chad elaborate on the teams, and we're gonna give certificates out to both teams, starting with the seven-year-olds, and let Chad talk about the achievements there. He happens to be one of the coaches, so you should know the best, right?
Mayor, from talking to him before he gets going, I know that all of them are excited about school getting ready to start.
Y'all ready for school to start? Give me a thumbs up. Thumbs down if no school.
Our ten-year-old team won the state tournament last weekend. It was hosted here in Lawrenceburg, and dominated is really a good word to use. They had a team batting average of .398. They scored a total of 55 runs and only allowed six for the entire tournament. So, they had 45 hits out of 113 at bats. Tim Kirkgin, my stat guy, Channing Coak, gave these to me. They, you know, it's the second time they've won a, second time they've won, third time they've won a state championship since this group has, they've got some different players here and there, but it's a really talented group, and they play next week in the Southeast Regional in Nashville. And so, excited for this group. Seven-year-old team, as far as they can advance is a state tournament, start playing Southeast Regional when you're eight. For the last two years, this team has back-to-back state champions in Cal Ripken. This team has never lost an All-Star game. They, they're a bunch of knot heads, you can tell by looking at them, but they're a bunch of good boys and love to play baseball. So, we're blessed to have two good teams here today.
All right. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, Chad, you can-
I think they like to dance, too, for some of the filming and outside. Or the videos, not filming.
Since you're coach, you gotta come up here. So, come over here, maybe.
Mayor, we don't have Howard, so if some of the parents get some good pictures, if they want to take them to the newspaper, that would be great.
Okay. So, Howard's not here today.
Well, I did call Howard, and then we tried to find him, and he may be gone to Loretta to the-
We'll have to adjourn.
Oh, man. All right, so when I call your name, we're starting with the seven-year-olds, and I call your names, you'll come by here, I'll give you a certificate. Or actually, if you want to do that, I'll switch places with you. Hopefully, I'll get everybody's name right. A.J. Daniel. Andrew Edwards. Jack Emerson. Hud Maddox. Callan McCauley. Colby Hagan. Jake Moore. Gavin Schultz. Trenton Waller. Case Chat. So, we got coaches Chad Moore, Jason Scott, Ben Emerson, and Brady Hut. Are you guys here? Jason, too.
Thank you.
Mayor, Jake, you got that ball?
Got something they won't give you, Mayor.
All right. He's gonna throw it to you.
All right, thank you. I'll put this up in my office, and so it'll be on display in the mayor's office if you guys want to come by and look at it. It'll be on one of my shelves in my conference room in there, so you guys can come look at that. Thank you for that. All right, we got the ten-year-olds. Yeah, what's our name? All right, ten-year-olds are out in the hall. So, when I call your name, guys, come on in and get your certificate here. T.J. Gottle. Cutter Coak. Andrew Keen. Isaiah Bentley.
Isaiah was MVP.
MVP.
He wore that ball out last pretty good chance.
Logan Boswell. Jacob Bertishaw. Carter Robertson. Quinn Smith. Miles Moore. And Blaine Green. Also, the coaches, Shannon Boswell, come here, Shannon. Walt Smith, and Jeremy Gottle.
Ten-year-olds.
All right, let's get ten-year-olds a hand here. Good job, guys. I want to get a photo.
All guys in the back, right here, Jake.
You're a little late, guys. Here, get a picture.
Y'all don't take, y'all don't take names.
Everybody smile one time. Everybody smile one time.
Hey, guys.
Y'all stand up, stand up. No, y'all stand up. Stand up. We're doing this big.
Let me have you paint the ball.
Everybody look at the camera.
Just look right at the door.
Look straight at the door, guys.
Everybody look at the cameras.
Three, two, one.
Don't go.
I just got pissed off.
Hey, guys.
Good job, guys.
Yes, he has.
Standing out.
Yes, he has.
It's all downhill from here.
Reg, like, have no much fun.
No.
I wonder if you're gonna speak to me or not?
Well, that's probably true. That's just in my DNA.
Well, I'd like to, for my next number.
Steve O'Leary, Charles.
One hour, wasn't there?
I think we got another group of guys coming in. It's clear.
If I'd been a store where I could've got you a King Head or not, I'd have brought you a King Head.
You smoke 'em? You don't?
Never have.
I betcha. Does Calvin still? He don't anymore, is he?
Thirty-eight.
Is that right?
Hey, J, will you close that door behind you? The sun's shining right in there.
Hey, when you, when you guys get a chance, I want to bring that truck down there and move that dumpster up there, next to my building.
All right.
Yeah. Well, when-
Did I know where you went?
Yeah, right there by the air conditioner.
Thank you, J.
Hey, we can't even put our own garbage in the dumpster. People come down that alley and this earth place fill them up.
Thank you, J.
Yeah. I don't reckon, it's been there the whole time.
For public?
Yeah, yeah, we can't even put our own garbage in there, it stays full.
All right, you guys ready to get going again?
Yes, sir.
All right. Chris, our turntable over to you, in your business.
Just a couple of things this morning. Let everybody know that we have been approved for the downtown revitalization grant. That's for improvements to the sidewalks here on the square and sidewalks, benches, some landscaping will not include pavement, but it is for the sidewalk grant. So, we've got a lot of work ahead of us on that. That's one of these grants that construction won't start anytime soon, but we've got a lot of planning ahead of us. Also, met with M-PAS yesterday, or on Tuesday, I'm sorry, to look at some of the congestion issues on Highway 64 and the 43 bypass, 64 bypass, Highway 43. He's got some recommendations, but he's not, he's not put it together yet. He wanted more time to evaluate it, and he'll be preparing us a written finding of what we can do to make that intersection a little safer. Garland Stone has, I've made contact with Garland, he's moving forward with plans for the demo expansion, so he's got a lot of work on that as well, but that should, we've moved forward with acquiring the property. Now Garland's working on the engineering. Also made contact with Eric Nutt, who advises that, he does expect the Springer Road project to be finished before, or not the whole project, but the portion of part of LCHS to be completed before school starts back. There've been a few slowdowns, but he thinks they'll still be on schedule. Also, would like to announce that Main Street Lawrenceburg has received the 2016 National Main Street Accreditation, and I've got April here for our department manager, and I'd like for her to step up today instead of a department manager to tell us a little bit about the Main Street program, what it takes to get the accreditation, and what it will mean for the city.
Usually, when I get up to speak, I just kind of ramble off and tell everybody kind of what Main Street is and what Main Street does, but I've got notes this time, I'm actually gonna read them to you so that I remember everything that I want to say, I'm a little bit more fair. Chris wanted me to talk about the accreditation. It's actually the 2015 accreditation. It's always a year behind, it's not 2016. And since I've been here for a little over four years, we've been accredited each time. Before that, we were not always accredited, and you're not always accredited. There's several different things that you have to do to meet that accreditation. And you have to secure operating budget funds with all your local government, your city council, your county, you know, it has, it's a combined effort. You have to foster strong public and private partnerships between all different entities. You have to track the progress, keep up with everything, like who moves in and who moves out, and how many jobs come in, and what work has been done on the building. It takes me all year long, I have to keep up with all the details of what all Main Street does to make sure to turn into our annual report every year so that we can get accredited. We provide assistance in developing real-world solutions to make the downtown a safe, appealing, and vibrant place where folks want to shop, work, and make memories. Like, we just want to make downtown a place wherever anyone wants to be. I want to read to you our mission statement and our vision statement, because I don't know if all of you even know truly what Main Street is and what we're about. A lot of people think that Main Street is just an events, planning thing. Some people think that, like Chris says, that we just plant the flowers on the square or help put up the Christmas tree. Like, they think that it's real simple, but really, Main Street is here for a reason and has lots of goals. Our mission statement for the historic downtown Lawrenceburg is to preserve and enhance the historic charm and integrity of our community while encouraging local spending, tourism, and a sense of community, which will improve our economy. The vision of Main Street Lawrenceburg is to revitalize the historical downtown business district through economic development within the context of historic preservation that will create a thriving and unique retail center in the historic downtown area that was once prominent in our community. This is where it all started, we want it to continue to grow here. Walmart hasn't always been around Lawrenceburg, Tennessee. Downtown has. You don't see pictures from a hundred years ago of Walmart, you can see pictures of downtown Lawrenceburg. The Tennessee Main Street Program is a program of the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, and it is a coordinating partner of the National Trust for Historic Preservation's National Main Street Center. The National Main Street Center encourages public-private partnerships to enhance the community and livability and job creation while maintaining the historic character, community's traditional commercial character districts. Main Street Lawrenceburg is set out to meet our objection by implementation of Main Street Organization's proven strategy called the four-point approach. That four-point approach consists of design, economic restructuring, promotion, and organization. A lot of people don't even know that we follow that. We have these committees, and we do abide by all of that. I want to list to you some of the reasons why the historic downtown Lawrenceburg is important. Some things that people don't always think of, things that people sometimes take for granted. Historical downtown Lawrenceburg provides a sense of community and place, is the heart and soul for our community. The historic downtown area is where it all began, it is a reflection of the American people who came before us to this area, their insight, their hope, and their struggle to build a civilization. It's now a reflection of our present community and leadership and how it sees itself. When industries begin looking at our community as a possible location, they examine many aspects of that particular location. Is it alive and viable, or does it represent local disinterest and failure? If you're coming in and you come to our square, what do you think? What are you looking at? What do you see? What are your positives? What are your negatives? Downtown represents a vast amount of public and private investment. Imagine the cost to recreate all the infrastructure and buildings that already exist in historic downtown district. Think of the waste of past dollars spent in the historic downtown district if it's neglected. Like, can you imagine rebuilding all this, starting over? What it would cost, what it would take to get the people back here, the buildings back here, things back established? The buildings in the historic downtown area are some of the oldest, if not the oldest, in our community. We have a responsibility to preserve its history for future generations. The buildings are historically significant and help highlight Lawrenceburg's history. The historic downtown is a business center. It was the first business center in Lawrenceburg and serves as an incubator for new businesses for tomorrow. If you were to open a new small business today, where do most people come to start out? Where do they want to learn? Where do they want to grow? A lot of people are looking around the square, this is where they want to be. It's a good place to start. Historic downtown Lawrenceburg district is conveniently located to our government center. Of course, y'all know that we're here, the municipal complex, the city hall, all the lawyers, the courthouse is within walking distance, the post office is within walking distance, the county buildings, walking distance. It's all right here. Historic downtown is also a center of unique shops and family-owned restaurants. These businesses are independently owned and support families who support local schools, local businesses, local government, and keeping local profits in town. Whenever we are out, like these boys, and they're fundraising and they're looking for money, and they're needing support, where do they go? They go to our local businesses. That's where they hit first. They don't hit Walmart first. They go to these people that they know are local and really truly support.
People that'll help.
Right. They know, they know where it truly comes from. Downtown has a sense of community pride. A healthy downtown district is a symbol of community pride, it boosts economic health and the quality of life. Y'all know that. Y'all know the parades that we have here, we, whenever we win World Series things and have pep rallies and whatever, we do that here. I mean, downtown is the gathering place. It is truly the heart of the community. Some of the things that we help with as Main Street is, number one, of course, is the James D. Vaughn Festival. You know, it's the second largest event that we have in Lawrence County each year. The only thing that beats it is the fair, right. The fair brings people in from the woodworks. I don't know where they all come from, but you know how the fair is, it's packed. The Vaughn Festival, we bring in over a thousand people a night, or a day, and we put more heads in beds in Lawrence County than any other event. If you try to get a hotel room during that week, you can forget it. You can't get it here, you can't get it in Lawrenceburg, and it's hard to get it in Columbia. We fill place up. People eat here, they get gas here, they shop while they're here. I mean, it brings lots of economic development, or not, no, it brings good tourism to Lawrence County. Like, that whole week is packed full of tax dollars for our, our community. Of course, we've had Heritage Festival now, and this year was our 27th annual Heritage Festival. I didn't see, honestly, I don't want to talk negative, but I didn't see as big of a turnout this year from the Heritage Festival. They're just, I don't know what the deal was, but there wasn't very much community involvement, not like in years past. So, this year, we're gonna do something a little different in the chamber, and some different people are gonna work on the bicentennial things for upcoming Lawrence County celebrations. So, we're gonna be part of that, and so the Heritage Festival will be smaller, it'll be more incorporated into the bicentennial celebrations. We always help with Christmas downtown, whether it be the mayor's Christmas tree or all the open houses, everything that goes on around downtown. We do a chili cook-off each year for the fire departments, helping them raise funds. We do Love Main Street, which is a, fundraisers actually for us, but last year, or this year actually, was our first annual Love Main Street, and it went over really good. I think everyone had a lot of fun, and so it'll continue to grow. And then what we do is just encourage others to feel the downtown, whether it be having their own things in the middle of the square, or shopping around downtown, or picnicking on the square, whatever, just to bring folks around downtown. We're also a part of the sidewalk grant. I'm gonna be involved in helping the design and layout and all the little details of that. Chris has asked me to be a part of that. We have received, I think all of you know, the CDBG grant for $100,000. It's going on right now, we're in the process. We've got paperwork at the State Historic Preservation Office that is waiting to be approved, and we're waiting on some certain people to turn in a little bit of information to us, and then we'll be able to move a little further. I turned in for the Tennessee Arts Commission grant, which is called Arts Builds Community, and it's a $2,500 grant, and it'll help pay for a new design, a new portrait of where the James D. Vaughn mural is. It's gonna be replaced, it's gonna be updated and vibrant and a little bit more taken care of, because you can hardly see that one, it's in rough shade. Our board members, I want to mention that real quick, and then I'll be done. I'm trying to make this real quick and get through with this so y'all can go on with your meeting. But our board members right now currently is, of course, I'm the director for Main Street. Vic Pusser is the president, who works with LUS. Vicky Burks is the vice president, works with the summit at home. Our current board members are Ethan Hadley with the Chamber of Commerce, Brett Weaver from Prime Seaton, Olivia White, Laura Cox, and Jason Weaver, all with Southern Tennessee Regional Healthcare Systems, and Scott Beasley with Waddle &amp; Reed. Have any questions about Main Street? They should all be able to answer your questions. If not, always call me.
Talk about the membership. Do you still have that?
Absolutely, we do. Membership is only $100 a year. You're listed on our website, your first choice whenever it comes to shopping around if you're a business. There's lots of different little perks. Like I said, it's only $100 a year. We do advertising invalidity in different places, and a lot of times, they'll give us a group discount where Main Street will help pay for the color part of it, and then you only have to pay for a little bit, so you get a discount with different things like that. Lots of little different perks with membership. Y'all have any more questions about?
Pokemon's been on the square a lot. My name's probably looking for doorways.
I don't know. Pokemon has been all over the place. So, be very careful when you're out there driving around, don't hit anybody.
Does the county contribute financially?
Yes, sir. And the city contributes $22,000 financially, which we can, we could not- I think everyone had a lot of fun, and so it'll continue to grow. And then what we do is just encourage others to feel the downtown, whether it be having their own things in the middle of the square, or shopping around downtown, or picnicking on the square, whatever, just to bring folks around downtown. We're also a part of the sidewalk grant. I'm going to be involved in helping the design and layout and all the little details of that. Chris has asked me to be a part of that. We have received, I think all of you know, the CDBG grant for $100,000. It's going on right now, we're in the process. We've got paperwork at the State Historic Preservation Office that is waiting to be approved, and we're waiting on some certain people to turn in a little bit of information to us, and then we'll be able to move a little farther. I turned in for the Tennessee Arts Commission grant, which is called Arts Builds Community, and it's a $2,500 grant, and it'll help pay for a new design, a new portrait of where the James D. Vaughn mural is. It's going to be replaced, it's going to be updated, and vibrant, and a little bit more taken care of, because you can hardly see that one, it's in rough shade. Our board members, I want to mention that real quick, and then I'll be done. I'm trying to make this real quick and get through with this, so y'all can go on with your meeting. But our board members right now, currently, is, of course, I'm the director for Main Street. Vic Pusser is the president, who works with LUS. Vicky Burks is the vice president, works with the summit at home. Our current board members are Ethan Hadley with the Chamber of Commerce, Brett Weaver from Prime Seaton, Olivia White, Laura Cox, and Jason Weaver, all with Southern Tennessee Regional Healthcare Systems, and Scott Beasley with Waddle &amp; Reed. Have any questions about Main Street? They should all be able to answer your questions, if not, always call me.
Talk about the membership. Do you still have that?
Absolutely, we do. Membership is only $100 a year. You're listed on our website, your first choice whenever it comes to shopping around if you're a business. There's lots of different little perks. Like I said, it's only $100 a year. We do advertising and validity in different places, and a lot of times, they'll give us a group discount, where Main Street will help pay for the color part of it, and then you only have to pay for a little bit, so you get a discount with different things like that. Lots of little different perks with membership. Don't have any more questions about? No. Pokemon has been all over the place, so be very careful when you're out there driving around, don't hit anybody.
April, does the county contribute financially?
Yes, sir. And the city contributes $22,000 financially, which we can, we could not do without. I mean, we couldn't function without it. And the county contributes $10,000 annually. They don't support me like the city does, but I'm here with y'all, and I try and do everything I can do to help the city in any way.
April, thank you. I haven't had a chance to publicly say that enough. I mean, I see a lot of the work that you do, I'm involved in a lot of stuff with you on Main Street, and so I appreciate the job that you do. We wouldn't have to go out there and make sure that you're so comfortable.
You're welcome. Thank y'all for the opportunity. I can't do it without y'all and all your help. I also have some postcards, and I'm just gonna leave them on the, if anybody wants one, it's for the Vaughn Festival, and I need volunteers. If anyone wants to usher for the Vaughn Festival, let me know. It's only, it starts every night at 7:00. You have to get there between 6:00 and 6:30, and you're done by 7:30. And all you have to do is take all these sweet old people to their seats, and tell them where they belong. They're real, it's real easy, it's a lot of fun, you get to meet lots of folks, so... The 27th, July 27th through the 31st. Are y'all making fun of me? All these old people. But old people are the best, they're sweet.
Thank you all.
Especially Ronald Paul.
Alright, Chris, any other business?
That's all I have, is all.
Alright. I don't have any, I did have a copy of LUS's financials for May on file here at the city hall. Also, don't have any old business on the table, I'll turn it over to new business, and Alan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Ordinance 1177, an ordinance to amend 1161 until budget appropriations of revenue and expenditures for 15, 16 fiscal year. This is to, this is for second and final reading today.
I got a motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion on this? See, no discussion. If you're in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 1177 is approved.
Next, a resolution of the board, mayor, and council of City of Lawrenceburg to participate in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. Matching sums required would be $2,000, and ask for your consideration.
Got a motion to approve? And a second? Any discussion? See, no discussion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
Next, a resolution of the board, mayor, and council of the City of Lawrenceburg to enter into a grant agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to implement a downtown revitalization project. Agreement number 160137, project ID 123121.00. This is a 20% match project, authorizing contribution of $137,575 toward the project. Ask for your consideration.
Then watch your pleasure on this. We got a motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion? See, no discussion. If you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution is approved.
So my business, Mayor, except to announce that, and remind everybody that the Lawrenceburg is hosting the 14 and the 13 state tournaments. They start tomorrow. The 13-year-olds play at 6 o'clock on Tom Cruise Field, will be playing Lebanon, and the 14-year-olds will be playing on Denver Trap Field, and they start at 3:00 tomorrow. Play a team out of Grassland, and if they win that game, they'll play again at 8:00 against Johnson City. So we'd invite all you guys out, and there's going to be some outstanding baseball talent at this tournament.
Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. You got a motion to adjourn? And a second?